Okay, we're gonna call meeting order, it's 3:30. So if everybody could please rise and the chairman can lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one revision to the agenda. We need to add an ad hoc minutes to the acting board secretary, so we need to add that.
Make a motion to add.
Support.
Aye.
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 Okay, now I need a motion to move to closed session.
I'll call you back.
To discuss material exempt. Do they consider material exempt from special disclosure by state or federal statute attorney claimant?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, we are returning back to a regular session here from closed session at 3:58. The first action item is to vote on the resignation agreement.
I'm offering a resolution, I'm offering a board resolution. Whereas the board has decided to move the district in a different direction and the parties have agreed it is in a mutual and respective best interest to formulate, agreed upon, and implement acceptable and amicable arrangements for the resignation of the superintendent Anne. Whereas the parties are desirous of resolving all controversies or concerns relating to the superintendent's employment with the district and her separation from that employment without resorting to litigation or other adversarial proceedings which would likely be expensive and potentially detrimental regardless of the outcome thereof. And whereas the parties have agreed to adjust, compromise, and settle permanently and completely all controversies, claims, disputes, and differences existing between and amongst them arising out of and arising from employees' employment with the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the board approves the terms of the resignation agreement and release as presented to the board on this date. All resolutions and part of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same as are hereby rescinded.
Can we do a motion on that?
Roll call.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Brooks, aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Abbott, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Simpson, aye.
Resolution declared and adopted.
We need to get a motion to approve Griff Mills and Ryan Rhodes as acting superintendents.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Brooks, aye.
Simpson, aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Abbott, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Motion passes. And we also need to vote on giving Ryan Rhodes judiciary authority and authority to sign school documents as needed.
So moved.
Support.
Brooks, aye.
Simpson, aye.
Moore, aye.
Abbott, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Motion carries. We also need to vote to have Anna Kinnett, that she will be the acting board secretary for meetings.
Support. So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Brooks, aye.
Simpson, aye.
Moore, aye.
Abbott, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Alright, I know a lot of you are here, you're not happy with this mutual agreement that been reached by Dr. Coffin and the board. But none of you know what we know and we cannot discuss any personal issues with the public. I know there have been comments that we're not being transparent but when it comes to personnel issues, we must follow law and protect our employees. There's been a lot of emotions from both sides and it is now time for everyone to come to the table and do what is best for the students. I hope that many of you signed up for the committees so that we can start working together and find a compromise that is best for our students and faculty of Tecumseh Public Schools. When we are divided, we will not accomplish anything. But working together, great things will be accomplished. Let's show everyone in this great town of ours that we are one Tecumseh. I'm gonna open it up to public comment portion. I ask that your comments please be respectful of Dr. Coffin, respect your privacy, and be respectful of the board as well. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Ben Ryan.
So I thought since we had so many participants, I would stand so you could actually see them in the back. My name's Ryan Rhodes. I'm one of the co-interim superintendents. I'm a member of this community. Some of you have seen email go out about my biography. I just retired last year in May. I thought I was retiring. I came back here to the community. I wanted to be a part of my kids' life. I had been traveling around the world globally, which was rather tough on our family. So I decided to come back. I thought that was more important to be a part of my kids' life than to have some high-profile job as a CEO. And that's the reason why I came back. Few things, so I know the community is highly concerned right now as far as what's happening. I know that all of you are full of emotion, one way or the other. And I just would like to express a few things. First of all, I have four kids in this district. I have a junior, I have a freshman, I have a seventh grader, and I have a third grader. I care about what happens. I chose this district. I chose to bring my family here. I could have put them anywhere I wanted to. Money was not an issue. I could have put them in private schools. We could have lived wherever we wanted to. I chose to come to Tecumseh. I chose to put my kids here. But my wife chose. I follow what my wife says. I'm not gonna lie, she's probably more important in terms of decision-making than I am. But the fact is, is that I did that because I believed in what was happening, what we're doing here in this community. And I agreed to take this position. Now, remember, I retired as a corporate CEO. I had enough stress in my life, okay, for many years. I chose to do this because Mr. Simpson and I, we had a discussion. We had a very frank and open discussion. I have a freshman here. My daughter Hannah Rhodes, and I don't think she's here at the moment. She's not here. She's too worried or too scared to be here. This is the first year that she ever flourished. My daughter came alive academically. We were living in Germany and unfortunately in their education system, they pretty much decide by the fourth grade what's gonna happen to your kids. And I could not have my daughter go through that. So we, part of the decision to move back here to the United States was the fact that my, my daughter could grow. She came home and she said, "Dad, I love going to school. I like what I do. I love the things that are happening. I like, I like my life. I like my friends. I like the people that I'm seeing in school and I like my facilitators and my teachers. They care for me." And it struck me, it was hard, because I had actually was very torn. My wife and I discussed quite openly, what should we do? Because we, we could watch the Facebook writings, we could see everything happening and we just said, "Okay, we're really not sure." So my point about Mr. Simpson, I said, "I will do this and I will step up. I have the ability to do this. I have the background to run the business side." If you've seen my bio, I've been at the university level. This is not a job which is not impossible. It can be done. However, I made one clear statement. We just simply can't go backwards. We just can't take everything that's been done and throw it out. That is just not okay. And openly, we made that agreement. And that is the reason why I'm standing here and the reason why I'm one of the co-interim superintendents. Because I want to see this community grow. I want to see our kids flourish. I understand fully what it takes to compete in a global world. People have been talking about that. I, I've been there. I mean, we had offices all over the world. I've made decisions in terms of how to find the best talent. How do we, how do we get kids doing the right things so that we can prosper? You, you can't get to a higher level than what I was doing in terms of technology. I've seen it, I know what it is. I know some of you were kind of bothered, you know, why would the technology director, you know, now be the co-superintendent and people were shaking their heads and scratching and thinking things of the board like, "What are you thinking?" That's because they knew me, because they took the time to ask the questions, because they got that chance to sit down and understand what, who I am as a person. So before this community decides to, to judge who I am as a person, spend the time, invest it, and talk to me. And you will see quite clearly that my interest is to see that we move forward. We will not scrap everything that's been done. And Mr. Simpson has been very clear about that. So I think we ought to be fair in terms of that. Now you can laugh and you can smirk and you can say the things that you want to. But I would like that you at least put some faith and some trust in me. And the reason why is I have four kids in this district. I'm a stakeholder. I am no different than all of you. I want the best for my kids. And if you knew me personally, if you've seen me coach, because I coach wrestling as well, if you've seen me coach, if you've seen me interact with my kids, if you've seen me interact with the students in our district so far, you would know the type of person I am. So spend that time and get to know me before you judge. And I will ensure that we are moving in the right direction with my co-superintendent, Mr. Mills. So thank you for the confidence from the board. I appreciate that very much. I will ensure that we're going in the right direction. We will do so in partnership together. Thank you. By the way, one thing. I have a son in the school system with the exact same name and my son's been receiving some pretty disparaging emails. He's a seventh grader. Please make sure that you find the right email address on the public website and send that to me and not to my seventh grade son. Because the things he's received in the last 48 hours, I expect better from the community. That's the only comment I have to that.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna open it up to public comment.
Today I brought my lovely assistant. My name is Megan McLemore. I'm a school of choice parent. Several of you have been to meetings and heard me speak about what's going on here in Tecumseh and how happy we are as a school of choice family. In 2017, we decided to move our kids from BD, which was also school of choice for us, and into the Tecumseh school system because of what was happening, the changes that were being made. He's poor. We came here because our, our oldest wasn't being challenged. And what we met with, he was pushed forward. He was allowed to take those advances. He's taking as an eighth grader high school courses. Our 11-year-old who is in sixth grade now, there's so many of them to keep track of. He's in flex learning, so he started sixth grade math last year and is finishing that this year. Will start the seventh grade curriculum. These are great things and they were great things that were happening before these changes. So I want to remember that Tecumseh has been great. We came here because they were great and we heard great things. I was there. I'm just like every one of you at some point. I was there for the open houses that were complete chaos. I left there in tears. I was hiding my frustrations for my kids, trying to push that positivity through so that when they came, they didn't judge it based on my opinions of it or my reaction or my frustrations. Because kids still have to be kids and I think it's important for all of us to remember that. Just like Ryan said with his son getting the emails, it's not necessary. I just, I was there for the frustration. I was there for the first day of COMPAS. I couldn't find my 10-year-old at the time, nine-year-old at the time. He was gone. His facilitator was missing. I'm sure she was attending to other kids, but at that time, my baby was the only thing that mattered. I was there when he finally found me and broke down in tears. My tough guy broke down in tears because he was lost too. I get it. I get the frustrations. I just, like the board has announced today and Ryan has reiterated, which, I mean, he stole my whole speech, I was gonna say.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I didn't travel the world globally, but I have ran businesses for several years. I've hired and fired and managed people for lots of years. And what we're doing in Tecumseh Public Schools is necessary for us to continue to hire people as we move forward. They need to know these changes. They need to be able to adjust to change. Because coming in as a manager and telling people, "Well, they're gonna have to adjust this to make it better", that's not always well-received, as we can see well in this room. It's not. Change has been hard for all of us. I do hope that the board is going to stay faithful to what they're saying today. We will be holding accountable, because I don't get a vote as a school of choice parent, but I will stand here as a parent and say, "Hey, you're now saying stuff for my kids too. It's not just me." And we're gonna hold you accountable for that. I do want my kiddos to grow up and graduate from Tecumseh. I don't want to change schools, just like none of the parents have wanted to change their kids' schools. I'm happy to see the changes that are happening next year and like the compromises that are made. After some very personal chaos that's been going on in my life, I asked for grace from some of my very close friends, some of my not-so-very-close friends, and I'm going to, because of that, extend that to the members of the board. I know that some of us have not always had great history together. But I will offer this olive branch, I think most of us will, to say, like, we do want to be here for our kids. That's why every single person is in this room. Not because necessarily they're a teacher and they might not be their kids, but they are their kids. So that's what we're hoping. Do you have anything to say? Thank you very much.
My name's William McGill. My grandson is student chair in the district. I have tried to keep quiet through some of the meetings. And when this first started, when this wave sort of came and things were, you know, it's been alluded to a few times on the internet when people were saying, you know, "Special ed kids, what, you know, what's the use? They're not gonna pay taxes", you know. Sort of crazy. And I thought to myself, my opinion was, this has gotta be a new kind of stupid that this is going on. The schools are going really well and we're going, hopefully, into the 21st century. But a couple weeks later, after it got rolling, before I left for my job in North Carolina with FEMA, it was clear that this is, was, in my opinion, the same old stupid. And it was like, we, this is what we want and we're gonna get it. I mean, it goes to show what a small group of white people in a district like Tecumseh can get done. But it's not the right thing to do. We had it in place. You know, we had it really rolling. Dr. Kelly, you're right, as the board president said. We don't know everything, but I know that she met with me a few times. Well, maybe quite a few, but. And was gracious and knew her job very well. She was a real advocate for special ed kids and she hired in Lori Church, who came in and quieted the waters, trust me, with special education issues that can cost the district lots of money. My big concern at this point is, and I'll be honest with you, I have to be honest. My opinion is that some of this agenda, manifesto, agenda, whatever it is, is code for like discriminatory stuff. It's like, because where we were at with the schools and everything else is like, "Let's learn about other cultures. Let's, you know, do that." We, we need some diversity in this community. And it's, I think it's coming off as we're traditional. And traditional, if you're a minority and you don't have a white face, you need to pay attention to those kind of things because that means, traditional means, you know, we ain't wanted. And I think that we have to guard against that and it could, I'm afraid it could easily go that way and I, I hope that it does not. But I intend to stay involved and Mrs. Lori Church's last day here. I know it's not only my grandson who owes a lot to her, but everybody that's got, it doesn't have to be a special ed kid. She was tremendous at her job and I thank her very much. Thank you, Lori. You know, I didn't plan to speak or say anything at all, but that was a pretty racist comment. I was one of the supporters backing my wife and I'm not white. And I'm a minority and I know what the changes, my kids are minority. I have four kids who graduated here. I loved Tecumseh, but we made a choice to pull our daughter because of the work that we were struggling with. She did not wanna go to school. She did not wanna do anything, but now she left school. She started Clinton, she was behind. It took her three months to get caught up and get ahead. Now she's a straight A student. And she wants to come back here. We wanna come back here, but we won't come back here till we see changes in a positive direction that will help everybody. And, you know, you're, in my opinion, you're a bigot. You shouldn't have said what you said.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Martinez and I'd like to stand, I'm Virgil's wife. Our daughter is who we was discussing. We talked about her at the last meeting. She spoke at a meeting and I didn't want her to speak. I didn't want her to speak that night. I kept telling her, "Sit down" when she was at the podium, because I didn't want her to be exposed to this. While she was speaking, there were narrow-minded people that were saying, making comments on the livestream that someone was videoing and saying that she's not here anymore. That's not how all kids learn. And I thought they totally missed the point of what she was trying to say. She looked at great sacrifice to herself. She had to give up something to go somewhere so that she could get her education. She was struggling and no one seemed to help or to seem to hear her or be worried about her. Her and several other students left that year. The next year I heard was over, this, this current year, I think over 168. If that's wrong, I apologize. That's a large number of kids to not be concerned about. They all matter. They all matter. And no one is saying, "Throw everything away." It's offensive to hear people say, "You wanna go back to the Stone Age or Traditional Age." We don't wanna do that. We just want to have whatever they need to make them successful be given to them. She does PBL at Clinton. She, nobody's against that sort of stuff, but whatever it is that she needs to be able to be successful, she should be able to get in this district that she goes to. She shouldn't have to make the sacrifice to leave just so that she can be successful. And I'd like to address something to you, Mr. Swift. You stood up at the last board meeting and you said her name and you said Victoria Martinez. You were either a really good guesser or you searched out on Face, on social media to find out that was her sister's name and when I corrected you to Veronica. I don't know which it was, but I would have liked it if you had come up to us at the meeting and asked her things if you wanted to know and we would have been happy to talk and discuss reasons why she's not, wasn't doing well, why she was struggling. Thank you.
Jamie, I'm Stacey Powell. I guess I would just like to say to Kelly, I know she's not here, in her honor, I for one, and I speak for many in this district, appreciate everything she has done. Worked hard alongside her. I may not make it through this, sorry. Ten years, she earned my respect. She worked harder than any superintendent I've ever worked with. We all owe her a great deal of thanks for putting our kids in the right direction to the future. And I hope that you mean what you say. I welcome you to question me, call me. I'm willing to talk to you. It doesn't have to be adversarial. But you do have to have an open mind, which in the past is not the truth between many of us. So I didn't wanna go there. I really wanted to stand Kelly. So I thank her for all her years of service. She's gonna soar. I'm not worried about her. I'll cheer her on her way. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
My name's Shelley Moore and Bill McGill's my husband. Before he was my husband, he was my principal. And when he was the principal and I was a teacher, we went on strike. And so he was really mad that we were on strike. And in fact, his wife at the time crossed the picket line. And there were like five of them across the picket line. And some of them were my really good friends. And it was horrible. That feeling of when the strike was over, it was five days. It was like the longest five days of my life. When we went back to work, I thought, "Hot dog, we're back to work." I did not think of all the animosity that would be between people. And I can remember walking in the hall and going up to Bill to say, "We're back." And he was like, "You didn't sign in." It was like he had instituted a new policy that teachers had to sign in. And so I was mad at him for that. And he was mad at me. And my good friends that I had taught with for 15 years were, some of them were mad at me, some of them weren't. And I remember being so conflicted about that. I thought, "What am I gonna do?" And this sounds corny, but when I can't figure out what to do, sometimes I look to poetry. And I found this poem and it was something about people do what makes sense to them. And that helped me get through that because as much as I disagreed with people who crossed the picket line, I knew that the people who did, did it because that was their truth and that made sense to them. I'm worried right now about the teachers. I was a teacher, I was a principal, I was all that junk. And when a staff is divided, kids really suffer and the teachers suffer. And when I came in today, I can see teachers who've been crying, who are scared, who are worried. They can't teach whether it's PBL or XYZ well if they're insecure, they're feeling unsupported, they don't know what the board's gonna do. But I wanna tell the teachers, "We have your backs. We support you 100%." If you were the people who are pro-recall, but you're still in front of my kid, I wanna be supportive of you. I will remain active in the school district. I am vigilant. I am radical. I don't apologize for that. I believe that all children, all children have the right to learn. I personally believe the system that has been taking so much derogatory abuse is that system. But that's just me. And if you have a different idea than me, I am not offended by that. However, and I'm gonna address this to the board, I'm very, very concerned about special ed kids. Lori Church is excellent resource for us. She's leaving and as far as we know, she has not been going to be replaced. That, I would pose to you as a question. How do you plan to ensure that special ed kids in this district continue to receive an inclusive, well-rounded education? And I will be asking you that a lot, because you have told us you have a plan. None of us have seen your plan. I certainly hope it includes special ed kids. Thank you. And hang in there, everybody. We'll get through this.
I had no intention of speaking today. My name's Jamie Hoddle and I'm a seventh grader. Her name is Kayla. And I have a fourth grader and if she was standing here, I guarantee everybody in this room would know my name. And I have a fourth grader. And if she was standing here, I guarantee everybody in this room would know my name. And her name is Reagan Honaway. She has two support services staff and a service dog. She has autism, significant ADHD, and a plethora of other issues and concerns. She requires a lot and she's a tricky kiddo. My husband and I are not from this community. We've been here a long time, but because of her, we don't care much. We don't know a lot of people. I have people that come up to me and say, oh, you're Reagan's mom. That's because Reagan's with me. Beyond that, I don't really know people. So it's not, for me, it's not quote unquote political. I just want to say, all kids learn different. Every kid learns different. And I don't care what we call it. Just you can't put every kid in a box. Not every kid needs to fit in that box. And if you can adapt the learning style to fit whatever each individual child needs, then I'm okay with whatever you want to call it. I would put my child up against just about any child in the gen ed classroom and say that her needs are significant. I've been in the superintendent's office. I've got people who, you know, I've been in Dr. Coffin's office where Lori Church and I have spent hours and hours and hours in conversations trying to figure out what is best for my child to fit into a gen ed classroom. That's all I'm asking for at the end of the day, be it from the superintendent, from the board, from the teachers. All I want is what's best. And it's not about Reagan. Reagan's just a good example because she gets lost oftentimes. And I don't want her to be forgotten. Third grade was the best school year that she ever had. And that was the first year of all of the changes. I'm not saying that that's the best school year she had because of the changes. I'm just saying that they tweaked things. They made adjustments. Things were changed. And she thrived from that. Please just don't throw all of that away and forget about those kids. That's all I'm asking.
Hello, I'm Grace Mooneyham McGill. I have asked the board questions previously, of which I've had and not had answers to. And they were, it was about special needs children. And it concerns me that they weren't answered and that I was banned from asking any further questions. And all I did was ask it. And so, Board, I'm concerned about you. Very concerned about you. And it was Tim I asked the question to. So having a president of our board who wouldn't answer a question from a grandma who is raising two children, I've already raised five. I have two that graduated from Tecumseh. I have 12 grandchildren. My dad's an ed, was an educator. My stepmother was an educator. And my husband, John McGill, the past John McGill, was an educator. So I know education. And when I ask these questions, I want answers. And so you want to know why I won't listen to you and won't believe you? Tell me how to trust you now after not responding to me. I would like to know how to trust you now. Thank you.
As many of you may know, if you paid attention during the campaign and the back and forth, I do have an autistic child. I was in Tecumseh with him and it was not a good experience. It was, you know, before we had Lori Church and all of that. So that is something that does concern me as well. He has since graduated. He actually ended up going to Stockbridge, which turned out to be the best school system for him at that time. I know. I've brought the same thing. But he graduated 10th in his class. So believe me, I understand that our special needs kids, our special ones, the autistic, whatever their instance may be, I do care about them and we will be addressing that.
But you never had, not once?
I did, several times. And over the course of the campaign, we were in positions where we couldn't always answer things that were asked adversarily. And I, that's all I'm going to say on that, Grace.
Well, good.
Hi, once again, so this, the special education portion, I'd like everybody, I'd like to make a very clear statement about that right now. Been in the job, I don't know how many hours. But I can tell you actually that that was already one of the things that we got to address. I know that Lori Church is, she's retiring today. She's a fantastic individual. She is a glue that pulls that together. Is a fantastic program. Parents choose to bring their students here because of what Tecumseh has done in terms of how they feel part of our community. So to make a very clear statement, I stepped in and it was one of the very first priorities that I started to look at. I escalated that last night to Mr. Simpson because I walked into a situation where there really was no plan that, that was focused on, okay, what are we going to do transition-wise with Lori Church? Yes, there were some things that were, were done, but we need something better than that. So to be quite open with you, what I'm doing at this point in time is I've taken that in my hands and we are moving forward with that. And I have made Mr. Simpson aware last night that this is a priority.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's very important, you know, the laws.
I understand the laws. And I will make sure, not only are we compliant to the laws, but are we compassionate? Because that's the most important thing, is that we are compassionate to all students. And everybody is treated equal. And that is exactly how.
That's the case now. There's compassion now for our students. I just want to see it remain.
And it will stay that way.
Thank you.
I can't speak for Griff, but I'm sure he would agree. We're going to be making sure that that stays the case, okay? So thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Taylor. I have two boys in the district, another one that's coming up. And I'm a proud graduate of Tecumseh High School. There are a lot of tension. There's a lot of tension. And I think some of us are concerned because there's a lot of unknown. You can't disclose some of those things that are behind the scenes. I get that. As a board, you ran on a campaign of transparency. Again, there are things that you can't say and I get that. But I think it would go a long way with the community if there were a little bit more notice. I get that this was an emergency meeting. But to schedule a meeting at 3:30 when there are teachers that couldn't attend because they're still on the clock, parents that can't attend because they need to pick their children up from school, maybe a spouse can't come home to watch them so at least one party can attend. That doesn't seem right. So I would urge you in the future to try to hold meetings at a time where more people can attend, especially the educators, my goodness. And the parents, that's why we're here. I think it would go a long way in building trust in you as a board. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Rochelle Johnson. I am a Tecumseh resident, a parent of a seventh grader and an educator at Steam West. And I knew I was going to speak today, but I didn't write anything down, thought all day. But I wanted to say some things. First of all, we are all scared. I am very afraid for my position. I know many of us are. And all along, I've heard you say that you care about what we think and what we want. But I have not heard anything from you. None of us have, except for what we're doing wrong. What is going to happen to those of us who believe in what we're doing fully and wholeheartedly? And have seen so much gain in learners and their, their own children? What is going to happen to us? We've lost our leader, who some of you didn't happen to not like her. I adored her. I adore her. I worked in a, quite a few school districts. I never knew my superintendent. They sat in the high castle and they never came to see us. She was in it all the way. And you cannot take that away from her. And I'm going to implore you to follow your policy when you hire a new superintendent. Your policy states that they must have classroom experience and a teaching certificate and administrative certificate and, and experience with curriculum. I've been in districts where they hire, you know, you don't have to have those things to be the superintendent. And I've been in districts where they don't. And that's why I never saw them. Okay? And again, I am afraid for my position because we go to work every day. You don't know. Maybe you do. Some of you do. We work really hard. I have worked harder at this, at Tecumseh than I've ever worked. And I worked with kindergarten at one time. That's hard. But it's because we want to. See, that's the thing. We want to. We stay, we work, we work over the summer. And none of that is because we had to. It's because we believe in what we do. So I'm going to implore you again to tell me, at your convenience, how you're going to support us that would like to continue our work? Because nothing I have heard from you has been positive or thankful for what we do. I have seen all your negative research. I have seen you bring those to the table many times. You say that not all of this is bad, but you failed to share the good. So in the future, I expect to see what you believe is the good. And I expect to hear it a lot because it'll do a lot for all of the employees. I know a lot, some of our, our educators don't like this. And there are some things behind the scenes that I can't talk about because of privacy and some leadership for me and my fellow educators. I can't speak to that. But I'll tell you, behind closed doors is not good and it's not always what you think is happening. And I don't have trust yet. You have to earn it from me. And I think all of us. And I hope you do. I'm here. I want to be here. I'm doing my work and I think I'm doing good work. And my son is here. And we moved here specifically for all of this, which I have heard about for a long time. So again, let's work together. That's the theme today. So I'm going to say that, but I need to hear more positivity from you. Thank you.
My name is Charlene Soul and I had nothing planned, didn't plan to speak. But I just want to publicly thank all of the teachers from a parent perspective. We chose to move here. I have three kids in the district, one at West Steam. And it has been the best decision that we ever could have made for our family. And we are so thankful for the administration, the staff, the teachers. I know you don't feel supported right now, but just know that there are parents out there that really appreciate you. And so just keep up the good work and we will keep, we will do anything it takes to support you. I'm an educator, I'm a special ed teacher. I've been a special ed teacher for 14 years. Sorry, I'm shaking. Because your speech was just so moving. But I know what it's like as an educator to, to, my voice not to be heard. You know, everybody from the state tells us what to do, but nobody asks us our opinion. So I think that's the biggest thing that I'm asking of the board is just please visit every classroom, talk to every teacher, hear what they have to say. Because they're, they know what's going on. They're on the front lines. So please, I, I value their opinion. And I, I mean, whatever you want to call it, PBL, I don't care. A good teacher is a good teacher no matter what the curriculum is. I mean, if a teacher has a passion for teaching, they're going to reach these kids. So just trust what they have to say and, and visit them and go into the classroom and see them, please.
Hi, I'm Nikki Reinhardt and I actually work here through the ISD. I just want to tell everyone, I haven't been here very long. I've only been here for a couple of months. And, but I, all of my time at the ISD, Tecumseh has been very, held in very high regard. Everyone at the ISD knew that Tecumseh was it, you know? This is the town that all of the other locals look to. This is, this is, you guys. You guys were it. You guys were it. And you, and you still are. This is a rocky road. Very emotional, but we can get through it and we will. And I also want to say on the other side of things that, you know, my office is just a couple down from Kelly's. Only here a couple of months. I liked her. She was a firecracker. She was passionate. And even behind, even in her office, even in the administrative office, that woman spoke of nothing but those kids, these kids, your kids. So I know there's mixed emotion about her, mixed opinion everywhere. But she's a good egg. Still is, probably. I'm sure she's, you know, fighting fires wherever she is. But I just, I just want to implore the community to pull together, even though it sounds impossible. We can, we can be Tecumseh again, the Tecumseh that everyone looked to.
Hi, I'm Paul Keizer. I have four kids currently in Tecumseh Public Schools. I have one who just graduated and is attending the CIA in California for culinary arts. Pretty much what I want to say today is I want to thank Lori Church. I'm a special education teacher. I've been doing my job for 22 years. Out of those 22 years, I think it was six years I taught general education and that kid for the last six. And it has been a difficult, as a special education teacher, laws change, rules change. I have been through several superintendent changes here in the district. Of all the administrators I've ever worked with, she has been, when it comes to my kids, and I've had a lot of them, she has been the best support, the rock behind what I have done. And regardless of who is pulling in as a special education teacher, I can guarantee you that we will continue to work with all of those kids. We will love all of those kids and we will do everything in our power to make sure that they get the education that they are capable of and that they deserve. And we will always hold all of those kids to the same high standards that every general education teacher also will hold them to. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to board discussion. Comments?
I think I'd like to just reassure the teachers. I know the committee thing went out and I heard from a teacher that for some reason you didn't all get it. It was reset today. So hopefully you have it now. If you don't, feel free to reach out to us. I would like to see at least two teachers on every committee. And, and we're always available. We're always ready to talk to you. Currently, there is a bylaw.
Currently, there is a bylaw that says that you're not supposed to communicate with the board directly. You're supposed to go through the superintendent. I don't know if you're aware of that or not. That is something that we are looking to repeal. I'm not sure why it was put in place. It doesn't seem like it's a great policy to us. So understand that we're kind of walking that line. I have been to a couple. I showed up for a staff meeting. I think Tim has visited a classroom or two. That will continue. That dialogue will continue. And like you've heard from several people today, there's no going back to tradition. There will be a modification to make it work better for all of the kids. Yours, mine, all of the kids, special needs, whatever the case may be.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Simpson, I.
Moore, I.
Abbott, I.
Johnson, I.